Evening, everyone, and welcome to our council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the role?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Amos. Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce. Mr. Greider. Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you. I was notified by Mr. Amos and Mr. Greider. They would not be present this evening. We do have a quorum and five council members. I first want to ask you to join me in a moment of silence, and I'll ask while you're joining me in a moment of silence that your hearts and prayers are with the families that were impacted this weekend with gun violence, and we have some council members that are going through some things as well. So I'd ask that you prepare your hearts and minds for that. So join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be laid by Martin Peterson, City Attorney. Please join me in the pledge.
Ode allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented in the minutes of the September 21st, 2020 regular session.
Second. Excuse me for a second, counsel. We do have two amendments to the agenda. One is for item number three. It's the public hearing, and it was for the resolution in the public hearing, and that is to change the dollar amount of the award from $63,569.57 to $63,561.57. And then the second amendment that we have is to item number 14, and that is to remove item number 14 from the agenda. Thank you.
We need to save that $2 if we.
We do.
We can. All right, Mrs. Jewen.
As amended.
Second.
That motion has been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. We have an agenda, an amended agenda, and we have minutes as well. I think we have a special presentation for donation and first responders, a presentation by the Waterloo Foundation. If you want to bring your mask, selves up. Somebody, someone can stand next to me. All right, wanna gather around? There we go. You take the, all right. Okay, all right. Well, we have a special presentation. I don't have any notes.
Not a problem. I got them for you, Mayor. The mayor, the council members, both present and by Zoom. I want to thank you for this opportunity to allow us to present some gifts to the first responders. We know that for our city of Waterloo to be safe and healthy, we need to partner with each other. And because of the work that the first responders have done in the past, and we expect to continue to do, we look for a very, very bright future for Waterloo. And in doing that, as you know, and I'm gonna pass it over to Tim in a minute, that we raise funds to support the first responders. And today I have another check for the police department for $1,865. I got these numbers in my head. Police chief? And the fire department for the same amount. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Tim.
We have another presentation that we can switch places.
Thank you, Mickey. Mayor, council, thanks for carving time out for us. Like you, mayor and council. The Waterloo Community Foundation is about Waterloo, basically, for the betterment, the forward progress, the safety and the well-being of our citizens. And we consider the city partners in that. And during this crazy, crazy year, we've seen that the city step up again and again on that. Back in March, when the COVID situation was really coming on, we committed half of our grant funding budget to an overall effort that raised hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars for the betterment of our wider community. And then came a growing appreciation and understanding of the job, the stresses that went with that job, of our true frontline folks at the hospitals and medical centers, and in our police department, and in our fire rescue department. And so we said, you know, let's do some more. And we put up $5,000 and advertised that we would match that much. And we had our fingers crossed. And so we were very, very heartened by how fast we went past that 5,000, past 10, past 15, all the way up to $29,385. And so you've already, the fire department and police department have had one check for that already. Tonight, we're here about you again as partners in full appreciation of what you do, not just in COVID, not just in this crazy 2020, but 24/7/365. You're our neighbors. We go to church with you. You're, we belong to the same community. We know you're there. And this is just a special opportunity to say thank you for doing what you do and how you do it so well. And it starts at the top, my friend. It starts at the top. So in commemoration of that, Waterloo artist Mike Brochar, architect that was familiar to these council chambers at times, donated his time and talent for a watercolor. And we got prints of that made and are distributing five to the city tonight. And I, I'll leave it to you how you want to divvy it up. Our suggestion, mayor, is one in the city hall, one at police hazmat, one at fire training, one in the police department, and one at fire station number one. So however you'd like to do that. In any event, thank you, thank you, thank you. Chief Fitzgerald.
Thank you, sir.
WFR. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
I'll be very succinct, mayor, once.
The motto is Waterloo leads. But not only does the mayor, who you've already dulled out your admiration of, not only does our mayor lead in our city council, but so do our citizens that make it possible for us to use these monies in a positive and proactive manner. So for the entire police department, from the bottom up in our organization, we're so thankful to have such ardent stakeholders, supporters like you all to really make it possible for us to do some things that may be outside of our budget. And, you know, just to know that citizens are willing to step up and do these things for us is wonderful. So in the spirit of Waterloo leads, you certainly have taken that mantle and run with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, on behalf of Waterloo Fire Rescue and all the first responders under our helm, we would like to also echo Chief Fitzgerald's sentiments there, as well as to say heartfelt thank you to the Waterloo Community Foundation for your support and the community's support. We love what we do every day. We wouldn't do this, but it does mean a lot to us to know that we have the community's support. So thank you very much for that.
And I want to thank the Waterloo Community Foundation, Mr. Meyer, and for all of your efforts here for making sure that we are reinvesting in the incredible things taking place in this community. You all are golden. Your efforts are tremendous. And from the bottom of our hearts, as a city staff and municipal operations, to all the children and programming that you do throughout this community. So thank you so much. And I can't tell people to go out to the Waterloo Community Foundation and give. I can't tell people to go to the Waterloo Community Foundation and give. And I can't remember if I just said that, but you're truly giving back to the community. So God bless all your work, and thank you so much for all your efforts and your blessings today. Thank you.
If they have something to look at during the meeting.
I just may take it home with me. Yeah, I'll just sit over here. Thank you. Wanted up with you, sir? Perfect. All right, get this mask off.
So and we'd tell you, Waterloo Foundation members, if you don't need to be here, this is the first time I ever tell you to leave, trying to maintain as much distance apart as we possibly can. Thank you so much, sir. All right, it is now time for continuation of the oral presentations. It's your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what's on your thoughts.
Forrest Diluvu, 1725 Huntington Road, 657A houses. Couple of them that are still on my list. Nine, or 800 Block of Williston. I've not heard anything about when or when that is going down, whether the bid's been let or anything. 921 West Second Street is another one the city owns. The roof is leaking. You can look up through the upstairs windows to see out through. It would be nice to get the asbestos out and get it done before it costs us more money to have to call it all asbestos. I think we need to get the asbestos out and get it down before it fills up with water in the basement. This house is not closed up. The back door's wide open. The windows are wide open. Subject to kids and animals and vigorous and anybody else that might go in there and get hurt or killed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Diluvu. Noel, Noel, do you have an update on those two properties? Please come up, ma'am. Just one second.
Noel Anderson, Community Funding Development Director, 811 Williston. We have determined that it will be a rackum demo. So you will see the bids and specs going out for that very quickly. We're putting those together to send out for bid. I will have to check on 921 West Second Street to see where we're at in that process. Obviously, we'll get the building secured again as soon as we can. People tend to break into them at times, but we'll get those backed secured up right away.
So you'll reach out for, I don't know which department does that, but if it's yours, Marty, or somewhere, make sure you do that. And then can you explain to people what rackum is? Because when you hear rackum, you mentioned asbestos removal, and then you said rackum. What does rackum mean?
So rackum means that the building is in such a state of disrepair that they can't go in and take out the asbestos safely. So it's basically an asbestos-containing material demolition. Typically, it's not necessarily more expensive. It just kind of varies on the contractors and the bidding on it. But it does limit the number of bidders on there that have asbestos as well as demolition capabilities. But we have a good number of them on our list to send out for bids.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Patricia Jackson. I live at 105 Lincoln Street. I received a letter, but it doesn't state why the city is wanting to do something with my sidewalk.
Oh, okay. So I think the sidewalks are on number two of the agenda. So if you wait just a few moments, once we get to that one, then I will have, I think, is Wayne or somebody, do we have anybody from engineering here?
Mayor, this is Jamie Knutson, city engineer. I have my Kirkies and Wayne Castle of my staff down here in our offices. Anybody can come down after the, after the public hearing, come down and talk with staff for any questions they may have.
So when I call on number two, only thing you need to do is come up and state your name and address for the record again. And then what I'll do, once we close that portion, then down the hallway, there'll be somebody waiting for you to come and talk to you about your sidewalk and what's happening and what's taking place.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to comment on non-agenda-related items going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr., who's that? Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring up again, I brought it up in first part of June, but the tragedy that occurred in Waterloo here just recently, but other incidents of gunfire. And I believe, and I would hope that the city council would, and I would hope that you would be able to initiate, if not you, then the city council initiate some discussions on municipal gun control and what options that we have available too. Because there are options out there. There are issues. And I would see Waterloo taking a lead on this if we discussed and then took some action to deal with the gun violence and the proliferation of guns, the amount, not just the amount, but the type of guns within our community. So I'm just bringing this up, asking that at some point in time soon, we have a work session on gun violence as gun control pertains to that.
All right, just taking notes.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, just taking notes. All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Mrs. Jewen.
Hi, yes, I'd like to just take this opportunity to once again remind everyone of the Cedar Valley Book Read that starts this coming Thursday. It will be every Thursday in October. We're having community leaders and professionals leading a panel discussion. It'll start at 6:30 on every one of those Thursdays. And it's about a book read on how to be an anti-racist. We think it's a very timely topic in light of the national unrest. And it is going to include a panel discussion this week. It's leaders from our education community, including you and I, Wortburg, Hawkeye, Allen College, and the Waterloo and Cedar Falls school districts. And then everyone is encouraged to have their only, their own book read group that will discuss portions of the book. You can go to the Facebook site, Cedar Valley Book Read, and sign up. We already have hundreds of people throughout the community that are participating. So we're really excited and encourage everyone to do the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
I'm just, is Paul Hudding on right now?
Paul, are you out there?
If you could just speak to the grand opening of the skateboard park on this Thursday?
Yes. Yes, thank you, councilman. This is Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. We are having ribbon cutting and grand opening of the new skate park located on Fairview Avenue next to Joe Straub Baseball Field. We're excited to show it off to the community. And you in the council and anyone listening are welcome to attend. So please do. It's gonna be a little bit cool, but should be sunny and nice. And Mayor has a big surprise for us, I think. I think we're gonna need to wrap him in bubble wrap.
And that's at 5 o'clock, sir?
It is. Thank you. 5 PM Thursday.
Thank you.
All right. And really quickly, I'd just like to add to the census. I think there's been an extension. Is it an extension to the 30th, Kelly?
Yes.
To October 30th. So we are still down a couple percentage points. So whatever your business, whatever your organization, whether it's your neighbor, whether it's a relative, please encourage them to take three to four minutes to register for the census. We need all hands on deck on this one. All right, Mrs. Jewen.
Yes, motion to close oral presentations, receive comments, and place on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
See, motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition to 1A1 bill payment in the amount of $4,935,118.40. Move to receive, approve, and place on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program, Zone 10, Contract Number 1018.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? And we'll have this lady go first. Just state your name and address for the record, and then we'll get you set up to talk to someone.
Yes, Patricia Jackson, 105 Lincoln Street.
All right. And you, you're wondering why you have an assessment and where these calls come from and all of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll have someone as soon as we finish out this portion that will meet you down at the end of the hall. All right. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Anthony Earhart, 518 East Second Street. I came today because the July 1st deadline. I came today because the July first deadline to get our own contractor to bid on the work, get an estimate on it, come at a bad time, COVID was firing up. We weren't able to get anybody to come look at our property to get estimates.
Okay.
So what I was just curious, any possibility of getting an extension on that so that we could have somebody come look at it?
Okay, so once we, once we finish up and close this part, then I'll have staff meet you outside on the, on the way down, on this floor, but right with the planning and zoning and engineering office, and I'll have staff waiting for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is anyone else?
Good afternoon, Robert Welch, Tri-County Head Start, two oh five Adam Street. I received the same letter as Ms. Jackson about the sidewalk and just had some questions, so I guess I can follow her down the hallway.
Yeah, 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 thank you, sir. It's, it's good to have everybody on record though, so we know what address, addresses are people are talking about. Come on, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, my name is James Lee. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Boys and Girls Club of the Cedar Valley at five fifteen Lime Street. We also received the same letter about the sidewalks. This was part of our capital campaign and also in our plan to repair our own sidewalks with our own contractor, private contractor. And so wanted to see if we could have that done since we're already in that process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Gerald Robinson. I have property on one fifty-eight Argyle and one oh eight Argyle. I think these are tremendous assessments. My opinion is they have metal forms. And why can't we rent the forms and pour our own concrete? Or get a Georgia King Chain Gang, use something like this, or kids from the high school, or whatever it is, that would help in a project. Five thousand dollars assessment for sidewalks, I doubt, how much is that a square inch? I mean, it's, I know that they've probably been gone over and neglected time after time. And so I don't like the idea that we meet with another individual. I think it's like a pressured salesman when you go into a garage or buy a car. You gotta meet the top boss and, but think it over. We need to get these forms and let the people pour their own concrete.
All right, thank you. And so the idea right now is the public hearing, so you can talk to, I guess, would be considered a top boss. But the problem is, we haven't gone around to every neighborhood and done that assessment, nor do I know how to do it. So we do have some experts that will be waiting for you that could answer some of the questions. And some of you have very valid questions, but we have folks here down the hall that's waiting to answer those questions for you and tell you what the process is and maybe a way to be able to shave some of those dollars from that too. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Heather Robinson. I'm with, in regards to the sidewalk, one oh eight Argyle. I'm just wondering, why is it that the people that are on the street have to pay for the sidewalk when they pay for taxes? I don't understand. I don't actually own that sidewalk. So why am I having to repair that sidewalk? And then not only that, I don't see people going down the sidewalk, and it's not in that bad of repair. I mean, compared to what I see in the other areas. I know you want to make the city look nice. We all want the city to look nice. But I don't own that sidewalk. I mean, my taxes don't, they go to pay the city, but our property doesn't go out there according to the property lines. So I don't understand why does the person who lives in front of the sidewalk have to pay for the sidewalk?
Is there a lot of overgrowth on there too? So you said it's not in that bad shape, is it?
Well, I'm, just between it, there's, you know, little weeds or whatever, but people can actually ride their bicycle down it. I mean, it's doable. It's not prim and proper, but, I mean, I'm talking about, it's not like
Right.
the city where you're walking down in front of Newton's Cafe and that, it's not. But I don't think that I should have to pay for it if I don't own it.
Right, and some, some of these just have to be cleaned up in there? And so they'll be able to explain and take a look at the pictures or whatever they have as well to try to do it. Jamie, anyone out there with comments on how this process is done? And who pays for the sidewalk and who doesn't, why or why not?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. In general, under, under our city code of ordinances, under Chapter Seven, that's where it enumerates that the property owners are required, under our ordinance, to maintain the sidewalks and the right of way along there, which includes mowing, keeping every, you know, mowing the grass, keeping trash picked up, moving and replacing sidewalks. That is something that the city council set, boy, a long time ago. This is about the third time through our zones, so this, we've been doing this for thirty years. So this will be the third time this, all of these properties are, are coming up with the sidewalk zone. But, but basically, we go through, we inspect the properties, and we have a process that, that we inform the property owners what they need to do to clean sidewalks. We'll come back, we'll come out and explain what it is that's wrong, or what needs to be repaired. And we give the, give the property owners time to make those repairs. If council remembers, a couple of years ago, we started doing inspections in the fall rather than the spring to provide another month for property owners to make those repairs previous, compared to what we were previously doing. But, you know, this is, this is, this is set up and has been set up, you know, has gone on thirty years now. The council decided that this was the process. If council wants to change it, that's certainly their prerogative, but the costs are, council needs to be very cautious about that if they want to look at that, because those costs are very large depending upon what zone you're in.
Right, well, we're not at the council yet. We're at that part, we're just trying to find out. Lady, the young lady had a question about the policy. So I needed an explanation of the policy, where it originated from, and you gave that. Is there anyone else that would like to comment right now or let us know going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
You, do you have someone that sidewalk, sir?
Yes, sir.
Come on.
Yes, sir, my name is Surinder Singh, and I have a sidewalk on two hundred Broadway property. It's a commercial property, and it's been closed down almost four years, no business there. But I got a notice for the sidewalk repair. It's quite a bit too high. And one is Franklin, four twenty-eight, so it should be like to be repaired, so I can hire my own contractor because I'm bid, giving some time.
Okay, okay, and absolutely, so once we, once we finish this part, then you'll have an opportunity to speak directly with the, the engineers to tell them what your intentions are. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You said two hundred Broadway and four twenty-eight? All right. All right, is there anyone else? Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specification form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, it, it's sort of a follow-up to some of the stuff that was stated there. I would like to, this time, ask that the city attorney might be able to, if he would, and, you know, I'd work with him on this and any other council, write up an amendment so the city council can vote on changing this ordinance, because it appears every time this comes up, there are numerous people either that come to the podium or call us as council people representing various wards or at-large about why they have to pay and the cost of that. So I just would request that language be written up, and we have a work session on possibly changing the ordinance so that the city picks up the cost of repairs as needed. And then when it comes to repairs, and I know I brought this up a week ago, but I want to bring it up again, and I, I know that you had sent me an email, Mr. Mayor, about having a work session on this, but I believe that we should have a work session on having mudjacking as an option that could be used, it can't be used in all cases, in fractured or broken squares of concrete, but it can be used in other ones where there's either unevenness or sunken. And it's been brought to my attention that the city, the city of Waterloo has even used mudjacking in some of their operations. So I would ask that a work session be scheduled for that. I know that there is for sure an individual or two that would speak to the benefit of mudjacking to the customers if we're going to keep customers and their, the costs associated with those repairs to their sidewalk in, in mind.
Kelly has, Kelly sent an email to you. We already have, we have a work session scheduled for next week.
Oh, I, I haven't seen that.
All right.
Yeah, I, I did send that out. I was gone on Friday, but I sent that out, so it'll be on October fifth.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, just to address some of the questions that, that people have. You know, as, as a homeowner, we're responsible for, for shoveling our sidewalks and keeping our sidewalks clear. This, this program has been extremely successful in making the sidewalks safer. I believe, and Jamie can correct me, I believe it's a three-quarter inch deviation in, in the sidewalk that has to be corrected. But that also, and then, and then sidewalk piece, squares that are, are badly broken and deteriorating. But that also protects the homeowner for liability if someone trips on that. And so I, I think it's a, it's a win-win program. I, I would hope that, that we can work with some of these people so that they have, and I know we will, so they have extended time to get it done with the COVID and work with contractors. But, but the sidewalk clearing and the sidewalk repair and the sidewalk maintenance falls on the homeowner, and it falls on the homeowner for their own protection also.
All right, anyone else, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer bids to city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, our estimate was six hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, forty-seven cents. Our first bidder was Midwest Concrete Incorporated of Piasta Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, five cents. Our second bidder was Minturn Incorporated of Brooklyn, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, forty cents. Our third bidder was Tricorn Construction Group of Dubuque, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount is seven hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, thirty-five cents. Final bidder was Brock Even Construction LLC of Jessup, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents.
All right, thank you. Someone, take number three, please? Anyone? Mr. Bozen or Mrs. Klein?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing on a purchase of twenty twenty Herb Warner Memorial Golf Course Irrigation Control System Updates.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak towards an irrigation control system updates? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion, receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need one more.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Madam Clerk?
Right, our estimate was sixty-five thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Spartan Distributors of Sparta, Michigan. Their bid amount was eighty-three thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Second bidder was MTI Distributing of Brooklyn Center, Minnesota. Their bid amount was sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, fifty-seven cents. Our final bidder was Rinders Incorporated of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. Their bid amount was one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution awarding the bid to MTI Distributing Incorporated of Brooklyn Center, Minnesota, in the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Second.
That motion was made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number four, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at one twenty Center Street in the amount of one dollar to Perfect Match Properties LLC, including a development and minimum assessment agreement for the development of a seven thousand, two hundred and eighty square foot building.
Check.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to item number four, Perfect Match Properties? Yes, sir.
Forest DeLuva, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. This isn't very clear to me. Are we selling the building as is? And will the city be incurring any expenses to do any removal, replacement, or whatever? In other words, is a dollar it and they get the building? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeLuva. Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We are entering into a development agreement with Perfect Match, who has built another building in the area as recent as twenty sixteen, so it's re, good redevelopment for this area. Under the terms of the development agreement, we would be demolishing the building ourselves and then checking for any additional environmental concerns on the site, as we know that there was some that showed up in the Phase One. Then we'd be conveying that to them when it is ready to be a lot to build back on.
So in a situation like this, how does, how does this, how does this work on behalf of the city? Like, what's the, what's the good thing that's happening? Because if I'm listening, I would think like, oh, nothing's happening, but what's happening in return?
I mean, number one, we, we acquired this through the sixty-seven A process because the building's been empty for quite a number of years. So number one, we're eliminating blight and making it more safe for the neighborhood. Number two, blight, um, and making it more safe for the air neighborhood. Number two, we are seeing redevelopment occur, um, for a new building worth 180,000 on there, additional business investment in that area. It's an older neighborhood of the, of the community along the railroad tracks. These were probably old railroad buildings originally. So this is a great place for redevelopment and we're glad to have partners such as B&amp;B Lawn, uh, partnering with us in this area. We've also seen another business, LJ's Welding, recently do a 200,000 square foot or $200,000 addition onto their building. So again, these two companies are kind of our champions in this area and trying to see some new commercial investments and bring jobs to the city.
So they're going to put a building on this site?
Yes, they are. 7,280 square foot. It'll be worth 180,000 dollars minimum.
That's, yeah, right. Thank you. There's a building going on this side. All right. All right. Uh, any other questions about this, this item?
Is it up for council yet or have we got it?
No, not yet.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Mr. Foyce?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Need one more.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 120 Center Street to Perfect Match Properties LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Check.
That motion has been made with a second. Mr. Bozen?
Yeah, I had just had a question for Mr. Anderson, and it was based on the email he sent out at 1:30 this afternoon on the amending of the agreement, uh, tonight. And what I'm concerned with is, is under item number six, page four, on the demolition environmental. I know we, we signed a contract to, to demo it last week, I believe. But it clearly states the city will demolish all structures on the property, remove all trees and stumps, fencing, except where parties agree. Concrete and debris leaving relative level of destruction. After demolition, the city will undertake a phase two environmental site assessment and will undertake appropriate remediation of any contamination identified by the ESA or the environmental site assessment. So this is kind of an open-ended thing, Mr. Anderson, because we don't really know what we could be getting into. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, we've done a phase one on there under our environmental grant. We have another environmental grant, um, from the EPA starting on October 1st, um, which we'll be working to start the phase two on. Um, so we have some ideas of what could be out there in terms of buried tanks and all that. Um, but, uh, yeah, sometimes you don't know exactly what, uh, what we're getting into until we dig those up.
But we will be incurring the expense of any environmental cleanup prior to deeding the property over. Is that correct?
That is correct. We're, we're hopeful that it can be covered by the grant, um, but we won't know exactly everything that's there until we, until we really get in to do the phase two and, and find out what's there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, uh, Noel, uh, Anderson, uh, it, is this Brownfields area subject to, um, uh, Brownfield, uh, grants?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. And also, how long have we been working on trying to get something done there? How many decades?
I don't know how long the building's actually been empty from a business being in there and occupying a portion of it or something like of that nature. Um, but I know that we've been working on this, this area in general for, you know, really starting with the 63, uh, corridor study, uh, back in, uh, 2003, 2004. So it's been quite some time that we've been specifically targeting this area for some redevelopment.
Well, it, uh, Noel, it's, it's good to see that something's finally happening here. So way to go.
All right. Thank you. And Noel, do you, do you know the, uh, the city has a website, uh, for this potential property and other ones for Brownsfield, right? And so if folks want to go out and see some of the redevelopment work, do you know that offhand or by the end of the meeting? Could you get that to me? So please?
Yes, I will.
All right. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with Perfect Match Properties LLC for the development of a 7,280 square foot building and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take five, six, and seven?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein?
Number five is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2021 grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation Aviation Bureau Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Program, contract number 22634, project number 9-1-210-ALO-200 in the amount of $67,090 for additional Waterloo Regional Airport hangar improvements and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number six is a resolution accepting a quit claim deed for the sewer lift station property located at 3931 Texas Street from Blackhawk County in the amount of a dollar and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And finally, number seven is a resolution supporting the application by Blackhawk Contracting and Development Company for the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Incentives Program to construct four new single-family homes, three homes located on lots two, three, and four of Baltimore Field First Edition and one on the easterly part of Lot Two of Crossroads Estates Replat Number Five as project number 17-WHTI-P-045, replacing previously approved lots one, four, five, and six of Hillside Edition with a local match of the city limits urban revitalization area, chloro tax abatement for each property and rescinding resolution number 219-145.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. Um, anyone with questions here or, uh, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen?
I have a number of questions for number seven, so I would really like if, uh, Mr. Anderson could give us, uh, an overall on this, please.
Oh, you want him to do a review or?
I would like him to do a review of number seven, then I have a number of questions.
Noel, can you talk about number seven?
Sure. Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Number seven is a request by Blackhawk Contracting Development, uh, essentially to switch their, uh, workforce housing tax credit program, which is a state program, um, of incentives. So they want to switch the, the lots that they were going to, uh, build the houses on to a new site, site where they have built the houses. They're switching them from the, uh, the, uh, the former school building that's right across the street on Madison and Monroe Streets from Highland. Um, and they'd like to switch them over to the Baltimore Field sites where they have built houses. Um, Tricia Ruff is on the, uh, the Zoom call and she might be able to explain more why they want to do that switch, but the request is, um, to be able to switch the locations. Um, since it's a state program, the City of Waterloo is the local sponsor for the applicant, and so we'd have to approve it as well.
All right. Mrs. Ruff, would you like to explain?
Yeah, she's on. Tricia?
Uh, she muted.
Uh, Mrs. Ruff, if you can unmute. There we go. Oh, there we not go. One more time.
It keeps popping back.
There we go.
Sorry. Are you okay still?
We can hear you.
Um, okay. So we have been awarded, uh, several WHTI-P projects which we have completed. Prior to that, we did a lot of H-E-Z, which is a housing, um, housing zone project. They're about the same thing. WHTI-P replaced H-E-Z. And the idea is that a contractor can build homes for low to moderate income people and are able to sell them basically below, um, what they would normally sell for because the state then gives incentives to the contractor, uh, for building the houses. They given in the form of investment tax credits and also rebates on, uh, the sales tax that is paid. We had begun building over on Baltimore Field and, uh, with the approval of, um, the city. And the, the process is a little complicated in terms of what the deadlines are for you to complete the project. And we visited with IEDA, Iowa Economic Development in February of this year, and in conversation just brought up that the deadline was May. And then we were told no. And we were under the impression and had been told that it was based on the date of the award letter, and it is not. It is based on the, um, not the award letter, that we found out that we got it, but rather when they actually approved it, which was earlier than the award letter. So in conversation with them and discussion, we said, gee, we, we can't finish that project in that amount, in that time period. And they said, well, you've got this other one that, yes, you can finish. And we said, well, we can finish it by then. And so the exchange was that we would move what we're doing on Baltimore Field, those homes to the WHTI-P-045. What has not been done is the approval of the council and then the submission of that to IEDA where they approve it and, um, and then everything goes through. We've done this many times before because you never know when you're building these, what's gonna, what's gonna sell, basically. So they allow you to switch, um, properties whenever you need to do that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bozen?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. My, my next question for Mr. Anderson would be, is, is this time sensitive?
Well, yes, I believe it is time sensitive based on, on what, uh, Mrs. Ruff noted that there, uh, the state has asked them that the, the projects were done. Um, and they do have the houses done on, on Vermont that are, they're switching into. Otherwise, I believe that they would lose the, uh, the state incentives.
But my, my question to you, sir, is, is if it's time sensitive, why does it come to us that, uh, that it has to be time sensitive to this council? Why doesn't it come to us before so that we have more time to, to, to work and, and, and look at this? And, and my reason for that, sir, is because on April 13th, you came before the council and asked for $10,000 to be paid upfront for the house on Vermont and the house on, on Eureka. And the only thing they had left to do was put the sidewalks in. And at that time, I asked you, I said, uh, if we approved this, and it was against my better judgment at the time, what recourse do we have if they don't put the sidewalks in? And, and you told us at that time that if they had to be in by the end of May and if the sidewalks weren't in, then we would, uh, seek legal action. Well, today's September 28th and the sidewalk in Vermont is still not completed. But yet we paid for these projects upfront, April 13th. So I have, I have a real issue with that going on because, um, it, it, I, I think that project on Vermont should be fin, finished before we, we move on to other projects.
I would agree. We, we were just made aware of this workforce housing, um, action request by the Ruff. So that's why this is on the agenda. They, they requested we put it on the agenda, um, and we put it on as fast as we could. I, I would agree. The, the sidewalks still need to be completed. I, I think from when that action was taken, some more sidewalk was done, but it is not 100% complete. So we are in contact with, uh, with the Ruffs and their, their legal representatives.
And then that, that's my concern because it's been...
The next one?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Um, the reason the sidewalk isn't finished is because there's a utility pole on the city area right there. And that, um, Mid-American Energy has to work with the city in order to get that moved or whatever's going to be done with it in order for us to finish the sidewalks.
Can I speak? So, so Noel, this is, this is for you. On the, on that sidewalk, I, I understand there's a guy wire that's, that's, that's right in the middle of where the sidewalk's going to be. And that guy wire was there when the project started. So that, it's, it's been known that that guy wa, guy wire was going to be in the way, uh, especially since that guy wire is, is right abutting the, the curb cut for the handicap ramp. So from the inception of this project until, we, they came before the council, May 13th to, to get prepaid on, on, on the, uh, uh, infill money, until September 28th, we haven't moved forward on it. Is it the city's responsibility to work with Mid-America to move that guy wire or is it the contractor's responsibility?
I mean, it's a primary responsibility of the contractor. Obviously, the city will help with contact where we can, but it would be their job to work with Mid-America to get it moved.
Okay.
We can't do it because it's on the city property and we have no right to do that. I was talking to Mid-American and Mid-American was getting in touch with the city, um, as recently as about two weeks ago. We talked to them again.
So let me ask a question. So Noel, at that time, how many, um, how, was it just one sidewalk or how many were there?
There was, there were several areas of sidewalks that were needing to be completed before that, like I said, some of those have been completed now. Um, another one did involve, uh, I was just going to say that, so there's the one with the guy wire. There's another one along Hummingbird, um, where there's, one street was done, but the other's, it's a corner lot. The other street was not done. That needs to be done as well.
No, that is done, Noel.
So that's done. So, so from...
All of it is done.
Wait, excuse me for a second. So from April to right now, everything has been done except one sidewalk?
Well, it's actually probably more like one panel of a sidewalk.
Okay. So there has been some progress. We just aren't there. So I will take responsibility. I'll call Mid-America tomorrow so we can get this worked out because, um, you know, council was told it would be done. I'll take some responsibility tomorrow. Reach out to Mid-America and see how we can push this ahead so we can get this passed tonight. So any other, any other questions?
The only comment I have to make is that, um, unless we receive the approval of the city for moving the ha, moving, switching houses on the project, we will ru, lose all the tax credits and, um, sales tax rebates that we have applied for. All the houses have been sold. The whole project is done except that one little area.
Yeah, we, we, uh...
My hands are tied.
Right. I think, um, Mr. Bozen is mentioning that, um, they want to see this, um, that portion done. So no one wants you to lose out on any tax credits, uh, but they just want to see the sidewalk done. So whatever, whatever needs to be done in all haste to get these sidewalks completed, as council, councilmen had stated, uh, we need to make sure, uh, we get that done. So, um, there was an agreement. There's a, so we just, we got to get it finished. So council, any more questions?
I don't have any.
You're good. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen? Oh, she's muted.
Mrs. Jewen?
She's muted.
Hold a thumbs up or something.
Could we get a thumbs up, Mrs. Jewen?
I'm sorry. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And, um...
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We got to get that done. Eight, nine, and 10.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the development agreement with Goldfish S&amp;M Properties LLC, originally executed April 27th, 2020, adjusting the timeline for redevelopment of residential property located at 1332 Walker Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number nine is adopting a resolution, a, a, a resolution approving an amendment with the development agreement of Goldfish S&amp;M Properties LLC, originally executed April 27th, 2020, adjusting the timeline for completion of residential property located at 1804 East 4th Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 10 is adopting a resolution approving a cooperative agreement with Blackhawk County in conjunction with the construction of the Shawlest, Shawlest Road Trail Extension Phase Two Project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Kind of do 11, it's attached to 10.
Uh, and, and leave one, you might as well, if...
I'll do, I'll do more. Uh, number 11 is a, is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding for recreational trail maintenance with Blackhawk County Conservation in conju- conjunction with the Shalice Road Trail Extension Phase Two project, authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number 12 is a resolution approving construction plans for sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and paving serving the Audubon Heights Seventh Edition as submitted by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, and Sewage Treatment Agreement, DNR Form 29 NOV00, with the Department of Natural Resources, and final acceptance of construction plans subject to review and acceptance by the Department of Natural Resources, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, council on those 30 items? No, I was just... Council on eight through 12? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 13, please. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, while considering pass for the second time in ordinance, adopting the 2020 traffic code of, of the city of Waterloo, Iowa.
Check.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, we talked about this. Any explanation needed? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we don't have enough people.
Oh, true that, true that. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. All right, let's go to, uh, 15.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, while considering pass for the first time in ordinance, amending the city of Waterloo traffic code by adding section 580C, no parking both sides, 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Wednesdays, when signs are erected in each block or portion thereof, giving notice, no person shall park a vehicle at any time on Wednesdays from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. within the district and upon any of the streets or portions thereof, as named herein, both sides of the 400 block of Janey Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, council, questions, conversation? Oh, yes, please come up, ma'am. Waited this whole meeting. Thank you.
Julie Wentz, I live at 405 Janey. I don't understand how come that day I can't have anybody park on that street because I can't park in my driveway, neither can anybody else, because I get sighted, because the, the vehicle was be- over the sidewalk.
Okay. Um, Sandy, Sandy, or anyone on? Sandy and Randy?
This is Sandy Greco. Hi. Um, I can ex- can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I can explain this. This was a request from the church, and I did send letters out to everyone, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear from you. Um, this is just on Wednesday evenings for three and a half hours, other than that, you can park there anytime.
Yeah, I know, but what if I have a doings on that day, or something happens, and somebody's coming over to my house, and there's no place to park?
Um, I, are you very far from, you're pretty close to the church parking lot, aren't you?
Yeah, both parking lots, but I didn't know that we could park in there.
Um, on, on something like this, yes, you can. They're, they're very favorable on that, and if you would have company or something, you could park in their parking lot that night.
Did you, did you, uh, does that meet your satisfaction, ma'am, or you're against it, just?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, we need to know. Okay, all right.
No, but...
If you would like to come to the podium...
No, it's, it's not okay, I don't think, because I bought the house expecting to have company over every day, and whenever they want.
Totally.
Now, on one day out of the week, I can't have nobody come over from 5:00 to 8:30. That, I don't think it's okay.
Okay.
I'm buying that house.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Sandy, did you hear, uh, lady's comments?
Yes, I did. I will, um, visit with her and also the pastor of the church.
All right, so, um, and so you didn't know this prior. Did you get any other, um, um, people concerned about this?
Um, no, I have not had any comments back at all, and letters went out about...
My house is the only one that's there.
Oh. Oh, your only house? So you're 100% of the property owners?
Yeah.
Does that change, does that change, does that change the, if there's only one property owner, does that change what we do for this?
It affects zoning, but I don't know if that affects traffic.
Affects zoning, maybe not traffic?
I'm not sure.
Um, Sandy, before council votes, um, do you want to have a chance to talk to the church and talk to this lady? Or do you just?
Yes, I would, I would do that, yeah.
So if we can, if we can, um, table or postpone, what, what are we doing in this situation?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone for one week.
Okay.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, so, ma'am, um, Sandy, do you, can, uh, I'm gonna give you a sheet of paper, get your telephone number and stuff down, and then, uh, I'm gonna have Sandy give you a call and see what we can get set up.
Okay.
All right, thank you. See, it makes a difference. You, you went back there and sat down. All right. Can we?
Motion to adjourn.
My motion?
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.